Okay. Good evening. I'm going to call it to order, the meeting of the Select Board. There's really just one item on the agenda for tonight, which is our public forum with Atlantic Development regarding Article One on the special meeting warrant. So what I thought I'd do is, I think, I recognize a lot of the people here who I think already know what this is about, but I'll just kind of again summarize. And then maybe we'll kick it over to our guests from Atlantic to speak more about it. So for the, there's a special town meeting coming up on Monday, October 27th at 6:30 at Trotty Ear. And the first article on the warrant is a proposed zoning change. And I think it's a major opportunity for the town. It's a proposed change that would enable a major retail development, Costco, to locate at the old Dell EMC property, which is currently vacant. It's at 21 Coslin Drive off Route Nine. And I think we're excited about it because as a town, we've been looking for a long time to strengthen our commercial tax base, to start to relieve pressure on residential taxpayers. And this is a major step forward by bringing in a major business like Costco that could attract other businesses that will help bring in more commercial tax revenue. It makes it easier for us to fund improvements to schools, roads, public safety. And it also makes life a little more convenient, less driving to Westboro, Marlboro, Framingham, to Waltham, Waltham, you had to do shopping. And so this is, Article One is a zoning change. It would require a two-thirds vote at town meeting. It's a necessary first step, and it would create a permit that you could apply for and get. And then for a business that would actually want to locate there, they need to apply for and get the permit. And that would be a forum for more detailed things, questions about, you know, parking, site plan review, all that type of stuff. So, but the first step, necessary first step is the zoning change. The town meeting has to approve. So, so far, there's been a formal process that this zoning article has gone through. I know we have several members of the planning board here. There's probably, what, maybe five meetings, six meetings that were held on the proposed zoning article. And that was an opportunity to get input from the planning board. There were edits made to the first draft to respond to public concerns. So that was kind of a formal legal process that it needed to go through. And this is an informal forum. You know, we don't really typically or usually frequently do things like this where we don't really have an agenda other than we just have a public forum. It's intended to give people an opportunity to ask the development team from Atlantic, they're the owners of the property, that would be bringing in Costco as a tenant. Any questions you like about the project itself, future plans, really whatever? Because this is a good place to do it because the town meeting may not have the time or the format for people to answer these questions. So also just wanted to mention that in addition to tonight's public forum, there's also going to be another forum at the Senior Center on October 21st at 1:00 PM. And if it, hopefully the weather, this storm goes away, Heritage Day is bright and sunny, rain or shine. I think that the team is also, from Atlantic, is planning to have a booth at Heritage Day as well. So with that, I can pass the microphone over to you, Bob, or Joe. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Select Board. For the record, Robert Buckley, Reuben Bronstein. I have with me this evening Joe Zink, the Principal of Atlantic Management, and my law partner Dennis McKenna, who's worked with us on this project. And as the chair indicated, it's been a very interactive and interesting process. I'll get into the zoning aspects of it after Joe, I think, will give an overview of who Atlantic is, what they do, how they do it, and why they chose the town of Southborough in this location. And then I'll try to walk interested parties through the zoning of what our objective was and is, and how we tried to achieve it. Joe?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Mr. Selectmen, and everyone tonight for hosting us and having us come out. Honestly, we appreciate these nights and appreciate this interaction. And I think the more that we can talk about this, walk people through it, have everyone understand, answer questions, it's better for all of us. And honestly, from when we first came in the summer to today, this is already a better project. There has been some good input. The planning board made a lot of changes, that interactive process back and forth, and a lot of collaboration. And today, this is a better article than we started out. But a little history on Atlantic. Started in 1972, based in Framingham. And we currently own a little over six million square feet of property. And the two largest projects that we've developed happen to be in Westboro and Marlboro. And just to give context of what we're trying to do, what we're trying to achieve, and kind of by track record. In Marlboro, we purchased the old, it was...
Started as Digital?
Yeah, Digital.
Digital, HP?
Yeah, and Hewlett Packard. And it's approximately 110 acres. And we purchased that in 2011. And to give you the exact numbers, that campus was back then assessed at $28 million and paid $838,000 a year in taxes. And this year, it's assessed at $231 million and pays 4.1 million in taxes, just property taxes plus a bunch of other taxes. So it's probably, say, 4.5. So it went from 838 to 4.5 million in approximately 12 years. And that one too, we worked through a zoning process and worked with the community and had a lot of engagement and back and forth. Ended up a project, again, the project ended up better off, there's a better development from the input from the community. And one of the things that we do often is we enter a community is we study the community and we listen. And we're very fortunate in Southborough that there was a roadmap. There was an economic development plan that was completed by the planning board. So we actually had input from the community. And interestingly enough, it specifically talked about these Dell properties, which, believe it or not, it took us two years of working with Dell to negotiate and to end up buying this property. But in that, in this thing, I think it was completed in the date, it's a little over two, it's 2021, this economic development plan. It says to increase commercial tax revenue by reducing office space vacancies and encouraging development on targeted, high potential sites such as Dell Technologies. And it went on to further talk about that. So we are literally following the game plan that the town laid out. So it almost kind of made it easy for us. But again, this was a starting point. Then when we came here and we went to work with the town, we had a lot of meetings. But it's good. We're happy to do it, we're happy to engage, and most of all, we're happy to listen. It's, my father was, I always say, my father's World War II, he was 17, very simple guy, left high school. And when I grew up as a boy, he said, "Son, you have two ears, one mouth, use it in proportion in life, you're a lot better off." And I've followed that path in my life. And if you come in and you do a lot of listening and community, and you understand and appreciate what the community wants to do, it helps the project become better. Anyone who comes in with arrogance and telling you, "We're doing this, we're doing that," it doesn't work. We also went into Westboro on Otter Street. I don't know if anyone remembers the old AstraZeneca with the glass pyramid. And we purchased that property, it's like six years ago. And we, property was assessed at 14.6 million, the taxes were 258,000 a year. This year, it's 108 million with 3.4 million in taxes. So it went from 258,000 a year to 3.4 million dollars a year. And that's not for full assessments, it can be over 4 million dollars. So you think of it, 250,000 to 4 million, it's going to be in probably six years. And rebuilding permit fees so far, that was probably a million, 250,000. When we're all done, there'll be a couple million dollars. So the economic impact is significant for these communities. And one of the things we see in a lot of the communities, unfortunately, residential prices, valuations are going up, and commercial valuations are going down. So that gap between the residents paying the taxes and businesses paying less is not good, it's not healthy for the community. It puts a lot of pressure on people in fixed incomes, young people trying to get a family going, it's just a lot of pressure. And what happens is, it's just because of the valuations. In fact, right now, there's currently three buildings in this park. Well, if we could go to... So you can see, the one that's highlighted, the one to the right, and another one to the right. So those three large buildings are all vacant today. And the one that we have highlighted, that's 280,000 feet, that's Coslin Drive, the one we're talking about. The one next to it is 32, we bought that, that's 190,000 feet. And then one next to it, Saitiva, just left the end of last month. So all three of those are vacant for about 640,000 square feet of property. So one of the things that we're trying to talk about, we did this in the other communities, is come in to activate the site, to bring in, we're going to create more economic activity, where people can be more desirable, where people are going to want to be here. And so we're fortunate that the community, to be able to work together to craft the zoning to allow Costco to come here. So the more we, like I said, we spend time, the more we talk about it, and then if we're fortunate enough to have this passed, then we'll go through a whole nother process on the actual project itself.
Yeah, I know Joe indicated that it took two years to negotiate with Dell, and that frustrated Joe. It did not frustrate us because that gave us a chance to look at the history. That was, usually you get a call and say, "We're closing in a month, what can we do?" We had a substantial amount of time to look at this site, study it, walk it. I insist anyone who works on what I do that they have to actually get out there and walk the site so they have an idea of what it's like and what the conditions are. Because we can all look at pictures, but it's oftentimes difficult to get the feel. And we went through the town's master plan, which has the economic development section. We went through your zoning, of course, and I always view zoning as the key. The key to the door that unlocks potential, gets you into the room. Once you're into the room, then you have to design and address all the other development issues, traffic, site topography, drainage, lighting, all the usual items. But if you don't get into the room, no one's going to do that. So we had a substantial amount of time to look at the background, what was articulated and put forth in the town's relevant planning documents. And Joe quoted that paragraph, I think it was in Section 3.2, that, and I looked at the word, it said targeted, high potential sites. So we said, "Okay, the town wants to target their growth and target their development." And so we focused on the word target, and we realized that there was also no permitted use. So we said, "We can develop a use that is targeted to one location, and in doing so, address the fear that you're opening the gates to uncontrolled development." The other thing we said, when I do a zoning plan, there were two, there were two counterweights. One is, a developer wants certainty and flexibility. So if you look at the definition, there's a lot of verbiage in there about what we can do so that there's no question what it can be and what can be located there. But at the same time, it's a special permit, which is a discretionary permit from the town, there's not a right to do it. You have to go through the process with the boards. So the developer wants flexibility and certainty, the town wants control. So we said, "We have to maintain the control." And then when we went through the process, one of the most enlightening aspects of going through the process with the town, with the six hearings before the planning board, which are required by statute, was that there was a bifurcation in some of the permitting in town. So we said, "If we're going to do something from inception to completion, it really would make sense to have a board be there in the beginning and be there at the end." So that they can hold us accountable, they have the history, they can look at what has been said and what was represented. And so one of the changes we suggested is that the, it came from the planning board initially, but the planning board be the permit granting authority. And we're fine with that because we think that allows for continuity of the process. So we developed a definition, it was fine tuned through the process, we developed the parameters of that use where it can be undertaken. And we actually provided some flexibility that if what we are saying is correct, we have a strong belief that it is, that this will become a magnet for other complementary uses in the area. And so there'll be the opportunity to do some, around the main building, some, maybe a restaurant, and things of that nature that will service the people there.
That's a good point, Buck. We just finished...
By the way, he calls me Buck sometimes instead of Bob, so. I do hope that the acoustics are good because otherwise, otherwise the FCC may be sending you a notice.
We've been working together for about 25 years. But we just finished on 32 Coslin, doing a complete interior demolition. It took us about six months and probably $3 million to basically clean out the entire side of the building, paint the exterior, and we had a broker open house a week ago. And one of the things we're telling people is that we're working on bringing in a Costco potentially down the road. And that's one of the things too, because right now, you drive through that area, it is like ghost town. It is so quiet in there, and that's a problem. If people go there and they put their office there, there is not much services or amenities or anything around it. And one of the things you see today in almost every major suburban industrial and office park is you're seeing other uses introduced to it. In Burlington, University Ave in Westwood, where they just bring in other uses. And so you have things that support each other, and the synergy it creates, they just, they help each other. And a lot of them too are different traffic patents. Like if you have the residential traffic patent, it's different than the commercial traffic patent, it's different than a retail one. In the case of retail, where the busiest day is a sad day at noon, when all the other buildings are empty. So it's a nice counterbalance and a way to do it, and they kind of offset each other.
And it doesn't open during night, it opens after the rush hour.
They don't open until 10:00 AM.
But we're going to address, if we are lucky enough to get the zoning, we will address all of those issues through the special permit process, site plan special permit process of the town. And we've already started to scope out, you know, what those issues would be, and through collaboration, the scope of those issues, the studies, the vetting of those studies. It's all very important because the surprise is Costco wants it to work as well as you want it to work. You know, if it doesn't work well, it doesn't work well for either side. So we know that that's a mountain we're going to have to climb if we are fortunate enough to get the zoning.
And one thing too, when we first came to town, we always asked people in the communities to talk to the other, talk to Westboro, talk to Marlboro, talk to the community leaders, and ask them how we treated and how we dealt with them. And almost every time we do that, it comes back with flying colors. Because we always say everything, like, "We're going to own these properties for a long time, we're not going anywhere, our office is down the street, you know, my family is going to be in the business, and another founder's family is in the business. So we're going to be here taking, servicing these properties. So we're not taking this thing just to sell it off, we're going to be here for the long term."
Because I always say, you need a face of the project. And I've done projects where you don't have a face of the project, and that makes it more difficult. But, you know, as Joe said, it's been 30 years, I think we've been doing stuff together, and still has a footprint in all those communities. So again, we went through the process, we've come up with a proposed definition that targets what Costco wants to do. And it is also very targeted according to your plan as to where it can be done and how it will be done. And we feel very confident it will be a success. Without naming the names, there are communities in the Commonwealth right now that are adjacent to each other that are fighting over who's going to get the Costco. It's not around here, but they're, both communities are trying to, you know, lure it to one side or the other. We don't have that here right now, but we don't have a lot of time. People have said, "Why, you know, this is a process that we started publicly last spring, early spring, and we're moving in some respects at a very consistent pace." Because it's an opportunity that is unique, but it is, time is of the essence. Because we probably have a year and a half of planning and development and studies, and then you have construction. So you want to move as quickly as you can to get the key to unlock the door. So I've been talking, we don't want to monopolize the conversation. This is an opportunity, if anyone has any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
So I guess at this point, we've both got people online, and we have people here. I think that we should start with people here have questions, and if you do, you can just come up to the podium there, introduce yourself, and ask any question that you have. This is Bonnie Fink.
Or is this casual?
A former selectman, and also a member of the school committee, and her husband...
No, that's okay. I just asked if you wanted my name.
Well, I thought I would introduce...
Bonnie's fine.
We do want people to say who they are, like always.
Welcome to town. And my question is not to be negative, because obviously somebody already mentioned why I have an interest in this. I am in favor of it. However, I read the warrant article, and I'm just curious why you did not put in the article the 6.7 acres that is actually in Westboro in the language? Because at some point, there could be questions, how much land is it, you know, if you drop a line, a boundary or a line on the Westboro side, it could come into question. So I would recommend that you put that in there.
Well, there was, actually, there was a reason for that. First of all, the town of Southborough has no jurisdiction over land in Westboro. But we did put in a parenthetical that a portion of the qualified land can be in another jurisdiction. But we didn't want the Attorney General in the review of the bylaw to say, "What's going on here? That you're trying to alter something in Westboro by putting Westboro, actually specifying the land in Westboro."
Well, that's why I questioned it, because the site that you're showing does not show the boundary line.
We'll make sure that, I think it does, is this the property line?
Not the one that I have, it didn't. I don't think it's...
Oh, when you say the boundary, are you, the town line?
I'm talking about the town of Westboro, town of Southborough.
Oh, you want the town line?
Well, because you're saying jurisdiction and you're showing a piece of property. I think to register it later, registry and deeds, that might be favorable.
By the time we get through the site plan special permit, we'll have to have a survey plan.
And the other question, since I am aware of the site, I've walked it, I know that Southborough has a different color of water hydrant than Westboro. Coslin Drive, that's a private road.
Portion of it, a public, yes.
Have you worked out any details with EMC as far as the Washington Street-Coslin Drive reconfiguration? Because they do reimburse Southborough for the funding of the plumbing.
Well, there is a, those are really site plan special permit issues. We do know where the roadways are. Washington was relocated and abandoned by the town a number of years ago, and a new layout is there. But we have not, we're certainly going to have to take a hard look at that when we do site circulation.
We do have an agreement in place with Dell.
For that? All right, for the benefit of Southborough too?
Yes.
These aren't meant to be negative. The other question I had was, the, I know the traffic pattern will be discussed at a later future date, and Westboro is party to this. Is there any plans to open the gate on Plantis Road? I know EMC is in control of it, Dell EMC, and they're redoing the road now, and I'm wondering, is this part of it?
To be determined, because we also want to repave some of that road out there too, is tied, it needs to be repaved, which we would pay to do that.
Right, but is there any plans to open it if Costco goes there?
I think, to be determined in terms of what the activity is...
So we'll know that through the process?
Yes.
Okay. And the last question that I had was, the, anyone that lives north of Route Nine and west of 85, to exit that site, you'd have to use the Crystal Pond Light. And I know MassDOT has a plan to realign that configuration, I don't know if it's still in the works. You would know that before the planning board, if that question came up. Because the traffic would take, coming out of there would take the right, excuse me, the left, and then go to Flag Road to get anything north of there, whether it be Fisher Road, Jericho Hill, Presidential. Which, and also our Fire and Police Department are going to require more personnel with this at some point.
We will be looking in great detail, we've already done a preliminary analysis as to the intersection there. That was designed for the Dell campus, which was substantially larger in terms of traffic impacts of what we're proposing. But that does not mean that we would not have to alter or play around with the timing. But that will be part of the site plan special permit, as well as our discussions with MassDOT.
Okay, because Madison Place does have a dirt road that was put in there for that purpose on that site. That's it, good luck. But I do really suggest, if you're going to show a site, that you put the town line through it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Carl Guyer, 146 Middle Road. Question is, this is really focused on having Costco occupy the site. If Costco does not want to occupy the site, for whatever reason, right? Would that not open this up to most anybody who wants to use this site, or is that...
No. Yeah, if you can read, if you read through it, it's, you have to have so much percentage of food, like a very high percentage of food. There's very few people that fit this.
Is, yeah, I saw that, right? So is that, wouldn't that, is that not non-competitive? I mean, are you eliminating... I mean, are you eliminating any small or midsize, or you're just, just by saying you need such a huge space that if Costco doesn't use the space, that it won't be able to be used?
One of the things we heard from the community is to have a supermarket have food. This was very important.
So it would be a supermarket, or something like that would move in there?
Well, you need to, you need to hit those qualifications that we had in there.
Okay, all right. Do you have, my other question is, do you have, you showed a map. Is that the entire site that you showed it?
Yes.
Does this, does this not set precedence for that, for the entire industrial area to be zoned as retail? I mean, somebody else, once you build yours, someone would come in and say, look, you did this one. Why can't you give me a retail space over here? I mean, it would set precedence for that, would it not?
Well, we've taken a hard look at the surrounding properties on the east side of Route 9. And some of the qualifications are distance from, the facility would have to have a certain distance from Route 9, and a certain distance from residential. And this is the only configuration that works there.
For that entire site?
You have to come back.
So this is, so this is really, this entire thing is really designed for Costco, right?
Yep, but if someone else.
Is that not acceptable?
That is acceptable. The law is, the law permits that.
It does permit that.
But if someone else wanted to do something in that development, they'd have to come back to the town.
Yeah.
Our whole idea was to give the town, as Buck was saying, control.
So what this does, this is site-specific. There's no precedent, because this is site-specific, consistent with your master plan. If somebody else were to have a different property somewhere else in the town, they would need to have the same arguments in favor of that site. The planning board would have to consider it. The select board would have to consider it. They would have to decide to promote it, and then it would go to town meetings, same as this. There's no precedent. Precedent is, you did it here, you have to do it here. That's not the case.
That's not the case here?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go to the Zoom audience, there's, so Marguerite and I went to the transportation last Saturday. So there's some common questions I think you might want to address tonight. Can you talk about septic? Can you, another version of the traffic question, can you talk about why you think the traffic concerns for Costco are a lot different than they would be if Dell had done with, or EMC had done what they planned to do originally, which is build a big office park? So those two things, we've heard a lot.
Yes.
As far as concerns from various people.
So in regard to septic, between 32 cars on and 21, we control 30,000 gallons of waste a day to Westboro, which we have full control of, so that we won't have any septic systems. Secondly, we got into traffic, as I mentioned earlier, Dell was originally going to build 1 million to 2 million square feet of office. When you have an office, what happens is, usually everyone comes in roughly the same time in the morning, 8 to 9, everyone leaves 4:30 to 5:30. So the peak AM, peak PM period are all roughly the same. So it puts stress on the system. Versus here, where you have a user who doesn't even open up till 10 o'clock, and their traffic is spread all over the day into the night. And their busiest time is a sad day at noon, when the rest of the park, no office and no R and D, all their buildings are empty. So the more you can spread out traffic, it takes the stress and pressure off of the system, which is, any traffic engineer will tell you, it's not necessarily the volume of traffic, it's when it occurs. When it all occurs at the same time, that's when you get the stress.
And there's a subset of that, which is that, given the commercial development, this is not replacing commercial development, it's enhancing commercial development. And those users in the other two buildings that Joe referenced, as well as properties in that, on that side of Route 9, will be able to stay on campus. So during the day, they don't have to leave to go get a sandwich or whatever. They'll have the option of staying on campus, which, it may not be a significant number, but it's at a peak time, which is noon, when you don't want people exiting onto Route 9, so.
During the week.
During the week. So you'll have that added benefit, as well as the potential for added meal taxes. There are so many ancillary things that we, you could go deep into the weeds, but there are, those benefits will come out during the planning board discussions. But we've thought through the traffic patterns. There may be some signal adjustments and things that will be required. We'll have to work with the planning board to do a scope of what has to, what intersections have to be studied, what are the legitimate and focus concerns of the town? And we'll address those, and I assume the planning board or the town will have that vetted through a peer review process to make sure that it's accurate. And we also have to deal with Mass DOT, because it's a controlled accessway, Route 9. So we have a lot of stops or issues or parties that will make sure that we do it right. And we want, as I said in the beginning, we want it to work as well as you want it to work, because no one wins if it doesn't work.
The third common question is, what would be the perceived impact on small businesses in Southboro?
That's a very good question. I think a lot of times, if you have smaller stores, they're more for convenience, and it's two different trips. If you're going to have a graduation party at your house, you're going to have 100 people, you're not stopping at a convenience place, you're going to someplace to buy bulk. You're going to buy, several cases would be, especially if my relatives come over, you're going to buy a lot of alcohol. So it's going to be a bigger trip. Now, if you're stopping to buy a bottle of wine, or a six-pack, or a case of beer, then you, it's a convenience trip. It's the same as the reason convenience stores and smaller stores exist. It's, people aren't going to, of course, one bag, a small bag of purchases, they're not going to go make a trip to a larger retailer. It's the same thing as if you, a supermarket or any other large store. Like, in a lot of communities, they have a small hardware store. People go. If it's a big trip, they're going to go to a larger store to do it. So that's what I think. But also too, the larger stores bring other people into communities. They bring more activity into a community in general.
And having done a lot of, over the last couple decades, done a lot of major, if you want to call them box facilities, you'll find that, as Joe said, no one's going to go to a Costco for two or three small items, when they can go down to a, even a gas station now has a convenience store. So it just doesn't, it's efficient.
Carl?
If you don't mind, another question. I want to follow up on Kathy's question. If anybody has noticed, in Southboro, most of the convenience stores have now dedicated a significant part of their stores to selling beer, wine, and liquor, right?
And lottery tickets, cigarettes.
Lottery tickets too, yeah. I don't know if you guys sell lottery tickets, but, not you guys, but Costco, right? I can't imagine that, you're going to have, you're going to ask for a liquor license? I mean, most Costcos, you're going to ask for a liquor license, right? I can't imagine that a significant part of their sales are going to be impacted by Costco, which is famous for, I get, infamous, I guess, might be the term, for selling beer, wine, and alcohol at a reduced price. I mean, that's going to be a draw. That's going to draw people.
And bulk.
And it's going to, yeah. And all our convenience stores, they, they're, half of them are liquor stores now, right? So I think there is going to be a significant impact of the small businesses in town. I mean, there's no question about it. I mean, use the example of hardware stores. Lowe's and Home Depot have devastated the small hardware stores wherever they go. I mean, they just, you know, they just disappeared.
We actually did a project in Quincy, and there was a guy, Bob Curry, who owned a couple hardware stores in Quincy, where there was also two Home Depots. He actually ended up, he modified his business. He did a lot more service, and did it different. And he ended up doing, his volume actually increased. So he went around the country and spoke to groups on how to work and how to modify your business model. In other words, he's not selling as many power drills, but he's doing a ton more screen savings, other things, like more customer service. The big stores don't do that. Like, a good example, if you're going to stop at one of these small stores, if you're going to buy a large quantity of alcohol, you're going to stop at a small convenience store to buy it. One, they don't have the selection to do it, and two, they don't, they're not going to take a dolly and wheel it out to your car in a sense. So it's the same as a food trip. Like, you might stop at a small store, pick up a couple of things. But if you're a big food shopping trip, you have to go to a place that has selection and the quantities that you're going to buy.
I'll also say, just as a personal experience, I've done a lot, a few of the large liquor retailers, without naming them, and the big fear was that they were going to put the small package store out of business. The demand for those small, the small operator, the licenses stays strong, and they're also thriving, because it's, there's a personal relationship you oftentimes develop with a local merchant. And you might pay a little more, but you also can get in and out quickly. It's all, it's convenient. So there's a lot of literature out there that it will force more efficiency, but it doesn't necessarily put them out of business.
Is this the first Costco you've done?
Yes.
So can you talk about Costco as far as the, an employer? We keep hearing really good things about Costco as far as people in Southboro liking to go to Costco. So can you talk about what you know about the quality of the company as an employer locally?
I think, I think if you, if you research Costco, you see they're viewed very favorably in terms of how they treat their employees and the longevity, in terms of what they offer for healthcare, for part-time employees, as well as full-time employees and life of stay. And they're starting salaries on the definitely upper end in the retail world. And they're just, they're a very successful store. In fact, the customer is, it's a different customer than a Walmart customer. It's a much, it's a loyal customer. They have a very strong following. It's a club, you join, you pay to join. But extremely successful in terms of their sales, customer loyalty, and employees too.
Yeah, and without getting into a lot of numbers in the weeds, I will tell you that that we'll probably, we will have this information when we go before the planning board. Two things I look at on a company, they have a very low turnover rate. You know, it's, they invest in their employees, and after two years, I think the turnover rate is less than eight or nine percent. For that type of business, that's, that's a very strong retention. People stay there a long period of time. They're very active with respect to the community that they're in, in terms of employees. They employ part-time jobs, but they guarantee that those part-time employees will get hours, versus just having a list of people who can be called in. They will give them hours. And the compensation, as Joe said, without getting into the numbers, it's at the higher end of the scale. And benefits.
If we're fortunate enough to have this approved, when we go through the whole process, we'll have Costco people, we'll be at these meetings. They'll be attending the meetings. One of the things, I think, in terms of a 10-year service clerk, compensation's around $70,000 a year.
Okay, we have a question from the online audience, right?
Hi, my name is Andrew. Wallet Drive in the Fayetteville neighborhood of Southboro. And I just had one question regarding this development, if it does pass town meeting. There's no details about the site plan. I know that's going to be discussed, but is there going to be a gas station associated with the Costco development there too?
Yes, there will.
All right, thank you.
All right. Just one follow-up point, and I may be wrong about this, Joe, but I think when you came to the select board a while ago, you know, there's another project that Atlantic did in Marlborough, right? Where I think you had spoken that you had some statistics or anecdotes about the, that there were local businesses where the volume of the business.
Yes.
I don't know if this is sparked, I thought, for me, it was an interesting anecdote. I don't know, other people might be.
So it's actually good memories. So in that case there, that property was empty, I mean, desolate. And we sat down with the mayor, the city council, and the planner, just to try to work on it. And the, there was a couple, like, everyone from the barber shop, the local, small local barber shop, who was good friends with the mayor, his business was down 40% over like four years. And by the time we reactivated the site, and they were back populated, he was up higher than he ever was before. So one of the things we do is, this comes in, we fill up 32 cars on, some other activity happens in the park, that, there's more people than there's more of the other businesses, more things they can do. I mean, Costco's not the answer to anyone for all people's retail needs. So you need more activity. But right now, like I said, you drive through that park, it is, like, you see tumbleweeds rolling across. There's no one there.
I walked it, that's true.
It's, I mean, you have literally 640,000 feet, three buildings, empty.
Yeah, on that point though, Mr. Chairman, Joe's right. When they went into the HP site, what do you call it now, Marlborough Hills?
Yes.
Marlborough Hills. And dealing with the mayor after that, that sparked, and without commenting whether you like it or not, that sparked the Apex Development Strip on Route 20, because all of a sudden, there was a buzz. People wanted to be in town. The mayor in Marlborough spent a lot of time trying to develop Main Street as a restaurant and active area. He did not like it when I told him the problem was, in the 80s, they bent Route 20 around Main Street. That's why people weren't going through it anymore, but, so be it. But it does have the, the added impacts. It's hard to measure, but they do go out there in terms of people want to be in that environment. People are now working there, you know, and communities, you know, they go through an evolution, and they, they control their identity. And again, it was very controlled in Marlborough, so that they can channel the development the way they want to, want to go.
All right. I think there's another question online?
She's muted, Andrew.
Oh, can you unmute, please?
So while we wait for her to get muted, to follow up on what Ms. Faniff was alluding to a few minutes ago as far as the site itself being partly in Southboro, partly in Westboro, more in Southboro than Westboro, what are your plans for actually siding the building?
The building will be, physical structure will be in Southboro, because that's where the tax revenue is derived from. So we specifically wanted to put the building in the host community, which we view as a host community, so that's where the tax revenue is.
It's about six acres in the rear.
So we like that answer. So if plans go like you hope they do, when do you see the store?
When you get the choice.
Okay, who's that?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, great. This is Kathy Bonner. I'm on Parkerville Road, South Side. I have a couple of questions. Would there be access to the development from Flanders Road? And how would that impact, say, Fruit Street?
We're going to end up doing that, a full traffic study, if we're successful with this. I would do that, but you'd come down, one is, but, you know, I think all of the traffic impact questions will be studied, and we will agree with the town on the scope of it, and how extensive it will be, and be able to do that. And then we'll also look for the town to hire their own traffic engineer to peer review our traffic study done, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. And the other question is, can you anticipate at this time, how many new jobs this would create? Or is that farther down in the process?
An average store is 302 employees.
Okay. All right, and that doesn't include whatever other stores might open around it?
Correct, activities.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So when do you think it might open? If the zoning article passes on the 27th, the special permit process goes as it should go, timing-wise, when do you think that the store could actually open?
Optimistically, 24 months to. Optimistically, twenty-four months to thirty months.
Yes, Bonnie?
Just two quick questions. Typically, in a real estate agreement, there's a clause that said that they'd like to have you all, all their permits in hand, so that they don't go look, someone doesn't go look for another site. Is there a date that you need all of your permits? I mean, that would be helpful, so that things come up, that come up quickly. If they have issues, people will ask them sooner than later.
Yes. It's outdated a little bit. We have, we have some time to do it before they have an escape clause for us to secure all the permits.
Okay.
We will, we'll be moving very quickly because, two reasons. One, they've already commissioned to go forward with the rezoning, which is not a cheap process. And number two, by the time we get to that point, the plans will be well, well-prepared. This is, this is, I hate the expression, but it's not their first rodeo.
Right.
So they know how to design it. So they'll be working very diligently to do the plans.
And it's helpful for the community to know that, so the questions come up sooner than later.
Right.
And I only ask that because my husband had a real estate license. The other question is, I already forgot what it was. There's been too many of them this evening. The liquor license. It's not a pouring license. It's not a one-day license. Do you know if Southborough has that additional license? Are you gonna have to appear before town meeting to request it and have it go to the state?
We haven't looked at that at this juncture. But there are numerous options.
They're hard to get.
They're hard to get. Well, not as hard as they used to be, but they're getting harder.
I'll sell you one. In Westborough. But that's something that needs, I mean, I would suggest you find that out if the town has an extra license that can be issued, or if you're gonna have to go to town meeting and request a license, it has to go to the state, and how that might interrupt what you're doing.
You can go ahead and answer that. We know the answer, Bonnie. We know the answer.
You do? Do we have one?
If you're looking, I don't know the answer, but.
We do not have one, and we are, we are anticipating bringing this forward at the annual town meeting, I believe.
Okay.
Well, first things first, I think.
Yeah.
Now, let's see.
Critical pass.
Get the two-thirds vote.
The state, the state doesn't like you to have what is called a pocket license, where we get a license in advance or something. But there are, there are options, and we will explore those.
And we don't wanna be presumptuous at all. We just wanna keep our head down and.
Because in order to get a license, you have to have a location, and they have to have the, it's specific. You have to have the design of the building, the controls. And we're, you know, we don't have that yet. But we will have that shortly, when I say shortly, in a, in a design standpoint, so we'll know when to start the process and, you know, what part of the building, and what the security is, and what the regulations are.
Just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Well, I think we've had a good discussion. I mean, just one view I'll share. So I moved to Southborough in 2013, and, you know, a lot of time driving back and forth on Route 9. And I think that in the, what, twelve years now I've lived here, that the only new things that have been developed on Route 9 would be, okay, the auto repair place right on the Framingham Road, the self-storage facility, there's been an explosion of self-storage facilities. And then, I think in 2013, that Del EMC property was still an operating place where people came to work. That closed, and you just see this gradual decline of, and then COVID happened, and, you know, really accelerated all these trends. I mean, one thing that's kind of depressing is on one of the office buildings that has very low occupancy, they don't even bother to plow half of the parking lot in the winter. And, you know, that's another side. So, and then just my time on this board of seeing, like, this, you know, we, this term we now use, the shift, which means, you know, it's part of our budgeting process. We have to factor in that every year, the percentage of our total tax revenue that's derived from commercial as opposed to rental is going down, down, down. And this is an opportunity, like, nothing like this has happened in ten, eleven, twelve years. This is an opportunity to finally start moving things in the right direction. So I hope that, you know, we can get the two-thirds vote at town meeting to start turning it around. Yes, Al?
So I've lived here now for thirty years, and we really haven't made a lot of progress over the course of thirty years, little but not a lot. When I started looking at, you know, the possibility of building a municipal sewer system, it was, again, for the real express purpose of trying to improve our residential versus commercial tax base. And I went painstakingly through every parcel on Route 9 to try and figure out how much rev, increase in assessed value we would need to begin to bring that residential slash commercial mix back to the eighty-twenty where it had been fifteen or twenty years ago. Right now, it's about, it's pretty close to eighty-five, fifteen. And the answer is, it's about a hundred and sixty million dollars of assessed value. And so we're going to have to work with folks like Atlantic to make Southborough a place that's, businesses can flourish. Because if businesses don't flourish, the taxes, our taxes are gonna head in the wrong direction in terms of that split. So this is a real opportunity to take a first step towards reversing that, that residential-commercial split. It's not, it's not the complete answer, but it is an excellent first step.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment on that?
Of course.
One of the benefits of doing something of this magnitude and creating a magnet, and Joe didn't bring it up, but it was, it happened in Marlboro, and it certainly happened in Westborough with the Amazon Robotics, is the state takes notice of it. It's economic development. So that puts you in a situation where you can then take advantage of one-stop grants and do applications to look at municipal projects. But it's a competitive process. So when you go for that money, and if you wanted to say sewer, for instance, or upgrade, whatever, I don't know what your infrastructure needs are, you have, you leverage this to say to the state, look what we're doing. We're taking a non-productive asset. Not only we include, enhance twenty-one, but the properties around are now attractive and desirable. We're creating jobs, economic activity. Not to be trite, but state, what are you gonna do for us? And so what I would suggest, I think the planning board, I see the, a couple members here are gonna be very busy over the next eighteen months, whatever, on plans and review. But the select board should look at their wish lists and say, how can we leverage this to make some things happen that we don't have that opportunity? Because it's extremely competitive now. It used to be that if you knew someone, you could go in and get a mass work squared. Now it's one-stop. They're gonna say to you, what do you have? Why would we want to invest here? And you had great success in Marlboro as well as Westborough with all the intersections there. We ought to, we, I don't know, I'll be around, but the town should leverage a project like this, not just because of Costco, what it's going to do around all the surrounding communities to create that economic gravitas that the state's gonna take notice of.
That's a great suggestion.
One quick point in terms of assessed value. Marlboro, we created over two hundred million dollars at one property assessed value. And Westborough was a hundred million. So it's significant in terms of economic impact on a community.
And Al, it wasn't fifteen years ago. We had eighty-twenty before COVID, right before COVID. So it went down that fast. I just wanna say that I've been to a lot of different groups. I went to Rotary Club. I've been to the Doll Men's Club. And surprisingly, the focus was not on the potential to generate more real estate taxes, which is what I thought it would be, because there is a lot of pressure in this town on trying to do something about the residential tax hit. But it was on Costco itself. People really like Costco. The Doll Men's Club, a few weeks ago, Sam Stivers went there. He was a member. And he said, there was a group, before the meeting started, that was talking about the hearing aids at Costco, how much they liked them. And they were going, but darn it, it's just too far to drive to Waltham. And Sam was dying to say, you're not gonna have to, but we, Costco had not been announced at that meeting. So I went to the one next time and made sure it was announced. So that's the thing we're hearing, is how good, very specific things are. People have their own thing they love at Costco, so that's where a lot of this excitement is coming from. Yes, everybody wants the tax revenue, of course, we all do. But it's just the quality of the merchant itself that seems to be the focus.
So Carl, I think there's another person online.
Oh, yeah.
That person left. Okay, so Carl, what's on your mind?
Oh, I just wanna address, there's the comment that, about the wrong direction thing, right? The shift that we've seen with residential and, and commercial property, I mean, it's happened across the entire state. I mean, it's all, everybody's, just because property values have gone up. And that's what I wanted to make a comment. When you say wrong direction, I, as a residential property owner, have been pretty happy with my home value going up, right? I've actually got a more valuable home, and I'm paying a tax rate that's lower than what it was from two thousand and eight. So I've got a more valuable piece of property and a lower tax rate. So when you say wrong direction, it's not always that bad, right? Because your comment, wrong direction, it's just a geographic change that's happened in the state. And it's not particularly a problem with Southborough. It's everywhere, right? Because the actual commercial values in our town have gone up recently. I mean, the assessments have gone up since two thousand and nineteen, they've gone up twenty-three percent. And then residential has gone up fifty-seven percent.
Well, we could talk.
You know, I rattle numbers all the time, you know.
You can spend a lot of time talking about this. I can just say, we can think of all of us very specific requests for funding from police, fire, schools, roads, which we do not do, because we just don't have the money to do it.
You know, I, I mean, these guys can block their ears down here when they hear. You probably wanna block yours. You know, I, okay. We, we have a high residential tax rate and a low commercial tax rate, because we don't split the tax rate. I mean, that's, that's a matter of fact. We're up at eighty-seven. Our residential tax rate is higher than the, the residential tax rate paid on eighty-seven percent of the property in this state. And our commercial tax rate is only higher than twenty-eight percent of the commercial property in this state, right? So we don't wanna split the tax rate. I know there's a lot of resistance to this, and I'm always, you know, I set hair on fire when I bring this up, right?
Carl, I thought we weren't gonna hear about the split tax rate at first, but I guess we are.
I didn't bring this up.
I knew it was coming.
I mean, you started with it.
We're gonna have the tax hearing in November. We gotta wait up to this, so you'll have your chance to convince us again.
I think the online person is back, and then maybe, after that, maybe it'll, it's been about an hour. Maybe we'll wrap up. And I'm sure people will stick around if you wanna ask people questions directly. Yep, okay.
Yeah, hi, this is Tom Gittens from seventy-three Flag Road. Joel, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yep.
Yep, okay. My question actually is for the planning board. And I'm wondering if they could speak to what are the biggest changes as part of this change? And are there risks associated with that that we should be aware of? And/or really compelling reasons to go forward? Thank you.
I don't know who wants to handle that. Mimi, maybe?
So the question was, what is the change and what are the potential risks?
Yeah, risks and compelling reasons for and against, if you will. I know you all have looked at it a lot. With this presentation, didn't really cover, why would we do this, or what are we doing, either one?
Well, the opportunity is to develop a underutilized site that was, was supposed to be an EMC campus many years ago, and nothing ever happened to it. So there's, there's a large site that is completely undeveloped and not utilized at all. So this is an opportunity to create some economic development in that site. The risks, I, we've been very, very specific as has Atlantic to zero this into this one site where we would like to see development and not have any unintended consequences at any other sites where this would not work as well. Does that answer your question?
So you're saying that there aren't any real risks from your perspective? That's what I heard.
Correct.
Can't hard-kick about that, then. Thank you.
All right. Well, would people like to adjourn? So I move that the select board adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.